And I ask all the interpreters to also press record. I'm going to give a minute for the interpreters to press record. Interpreters? One second, why make sure the interpreters can press record in a second. Hi Sarah, can you press record?
Hello.
Yes, can you press the record button? It's under the more three dots and there should be an option to record. Felipe, are you able to record? It should be under the three dots option. Ah, okay, okay. Sorry, sorry folks, we're gonna take a little minute. Okay, I think we're gonna continue until I- I'm sorry? Okay, we're gonna continue. Yeah, we're gonna get in the interest of time, interpreters. We're gonna, in the interest of time, we're gonna continue. And the meeting is being recorded in English. And we'll work out the interpretation recording later, sorry about that. This webinar, the recording of this webinar will be posted on mass.gov/2030cecp website within a week. We'll try to make it within a couple of days. As we know, the end of the comment period is at the end of this month, so we'll try to expedite this. We will start the hearing with a presentation all by time for all comments. If you have clarifying questions during the presentation, you can let us know in the Q and A box. If you have a logistical issue, please let us know in the chat. Anything written in the chat and Q and A box are not considered a written comment, so please keep that in mind. And now I will turn it over to EA's Undersecretary of Energy and Climate Solutions Judy Chang to officially start the meeting.
Great, good afternoon, everyone. I am very pleased to be here and to share with you some of the work that we've been doing for the last year and a half to develop our Clean Energy Climate Plan for 2025 and 2030. We have prepared a slide deck that you should be able to download from the website. But if it's okay, I would like to share the web, share the slides here to facilitate the conversation. Just want to make sure we can pull up the slides. Where am I? Okay, there we go. Thank you. Um, the Clean Energy Climate Plan is a culmination of all the work that we have been doing for the last couple of years, but really it's riding on the shoulders of those that have been working on it for several years in the past. And this is the public hearing for our proposals to be included in the Clean Energy Climate Plans for 2025 and 2030, which are statutorily required. We're using this five-year and 10-year climate plans as the foundation to develop the policies and strategies to set and meet the greenhouse gas emissions reduction for the Commonwealth. We had developed an interim Clean Energy Climate Plan for 2030 that was made public in December of 2020. Since then, the 2021 Climate Law has required us to develop a plan for both separately for 2025 and 2030. The proposals in this presentation and in this discussion are based on policies and programs that we're developing now, but also on the programs that are already underway. We have developed the ongoing policies based on the feedback we have received from stakeholders since last year and to, and to meet the new requirements promulgated under the Climate Law. Here is what I will spend the next two hours discussing with you. In this presentation, we will first share with you some of the background, key findings from our analyses. And I will share with you our preliminary limits and sublimits for 2025 and 2030, some of the key considerations for policy development. And then I will go through sector by sector in the list that you see on the slide, the goals and the strategies, and then we will talk about next steps and share with you what are our next steps. At the end of the slide deck that you can download, we also have a two pages, two pages on the terms and acronyms, or I'm not gonna talk about that on this hearing, at this hearing. Next slide, please. As background, for those that are not spending every time, every day of your, every time, every hour of your day thinking about the climate policies for Massachusetts, I want to give you some background on what we are required by the law. So as required by the 2021 Climate Law, the Clean Energy Climate Plans act as a roadmap for how the Commonwealth will achieve its greenhouse gas emissions reduction. We're required by the law to set economy-wide, to make sure that we achieve economy-wide greenhouse gas reductions to by at least 50% by 2030, 75% by 2040, and 85% by 2050, and achieve net zero greenhouse gas emissions by 2050. The law also requires my agency to set limits for 2025, 2035, and 2045, which are the interim years in what was set in the law. We're also required to set sublimits for the following sectors: electric power, transportation, commercial industrial heating and cooling, residential heating and cooling, industrial processes, natural gas distribution service, and any other sectors that the Secretary of Energy Environmental Affairs may designate. For the first time, the definition of natural working land was codified in the law. The legislation requires that we, as part of the Clean Energy Climate Plan, track carbon flux on natural working lands, set goals to reduce emissions and increase carbon sequestration on these lands, and develop a plan to achieve those goals. In addition, we will designate specific metrics based on which we will set benchmarks and track progress. Next slide, please. We had shared and published an interim Clean Energy Climate Plan for 2030 back in 2020, 2020. And since then, we have received over 1,000 written comments and on the, on that interim CECP. And we have also heard many comments during the public comment period that was at the beginning of 2021. We've heard many commenters and we should have more commitment and specificity around equity and environmental justice in our policies and supporting programs, ensuring a just transition by focusing the workforce, focusing on workforce development and training programs, especially for underrepresented groups, and provide adequate funding and financing programs to support decarbonization. We have also heard specific feedback on the sector-specific policies. And this slide provides you some high-level summaries of the representative comments we have, we have received. And you can see the perspectives in the submitted comments. On transportation policies, many wanted more commitment on public transportation, programs to reduce car travel, incentives for low and moderate consumers to buy electric vehicles, more electric vehicle charging infrastructure, as well as for electrification to extend more broadly to more vehicle types and classes. I, I will, there's a comment in here to point links to this presentation. So I will lean on my colleagues to answer those questions as they arise. For building policies, we have heard differing perspectives on building energy codes that achieve net zero and how fast we should phase out the incentives for oil and natural gas heating systems, and how fast we should electrify our buildings versus adding biofuel and hydrogen to our heating system. For electric power policies, many supported more renewable energy that includes offshore wind, solar, and additional energy storage. But we also heard concerns about citing a ground mount source, a grounds, ground mount solar projects and their land use impacts. We have heard from some that they object to including biomass combustion to create electricity as a part of our renewable portfolio standard. On non-energy policies, we heard concerns about natural gas leaks being undercounted in our statewide greenhouse gas emissions inventory, and concerns from our utilities that they may not be able to meet the regulations, capping SF6 emissions with additional build-out of electricity infrastructure, and concerns from some commenters about emissions from waste inciner- incinerate, incineration to produce electricity. On natural working lands, many commenters wanted additional urban tree planting. We have also heard different perspectives on forest management and durable, durable wood products. Next slide, please. What I thought we do, as this slide shows, is that we want to give you some more background about what has happened since the interim CCP was published in the end, at the end of 2020. So of course, time doesn't stop just because we published the interim 2030 CCP. And also, the new climate bill had come out in 2021. But things have shifted and changed, and here are some highlights of those changes. In transportation, the Regional Transportation Climate Initiative program was put on hold, particularly perhaps from our partnering states that there was a influx of federal infrastructure funding and support to the various different New England and East Coast states. California has updated and continued to update the regulations. They have updated the regulations requiring truck manufacturers to increase their sale of non-emitting trucks. And in the process, and California is in the process of updating additional regulation required car manufacturers to increase their sale of non-emitting cars. Massachusetts is required by law to follow California vehicle emission standards if those are more stringent by the, stringent than the federal standards. So as California adopts these regulations, Massachusetts are required by law to follow. In buildings, our three-year energy efficiency plan through, for the years 2022 to 2024 were approved with a strong commitment to weatherization, electrification, and a focus on serving our environmental justice communities to increase equity in our MassSave program. Our Department of Energy Resources is updating the stretch energy building code and the municipal opt-in net zero energy code as required by the 2021 Climate Law. And as indicated in the interim CCP, Governor Baker signed an executive order convening a commission on clean heat. And that commission is drafting preliminary recommendations on how best to cap and reduce emissions from heating fuels in buildings. In electric power, we're now authorized to procure 5.6 gigawatts of offshore wind. The Renewable Energy Portfolio Standard was also recently changed via the Climate Law, requiring 40% of Massachusetts electricity to be produced from renewable energy by 2030. The Climate Law also established a municipal greenhouse gas emission standard, or the GGES, for municipal light plants requiring 50% of electricity produced by those light plants to be from non-carbon emitting resources. As to bringing in additional hydroelectricity power from Canada to provide stable and clean energy to balance intermittent renewable generation, there's an increased uncertainty around the project that Massachusetts had procured, named New England Clean Energy Connect. And regarding the non-energy and industrial processes on the lower left-hand side of the slide, the federal government has now set a law that phases out fluorinated gases such as HFCs being used in refrigeration systems, aerosols, and foams. And the phase out of those potential potent greenhouse gas emissions, greenhouse gases will help curb rising emissions from this sector nationally. And so we're essentially riding the wave of the national policy. On natural working lands, since the last, since last year, we have begun to improve our methodology to track biogenic carbon emissions and carbon sequestration on our lands. This effort will give us a better estimation of how much emissions can be offset by carbon sequestration by our natural and working lands. Next slide, please. In the past year, we have continued to work on improving and really refining our pathway analyses that started several years prior, that culminated into our 2015 roadmap study released at the end of 2020, and we continued that work. This slide shows you the emissions, both historical and projected or simulated, simulated projections into the future. So I'm gonna spend a few moments on this, and then I'm gonna pause just for any clarifying questions. So in the graphic, you should see different sectors: power, buildings, transportation, and other non-energy and industrial. The numbers up to 2020 are historical actuals measured by our DEP inventory. The 2020 numbers are estimated because we don't have the final numbers from our national databases. But our Department of Environmental Protection has done some estimation, and these are estimated numbers for 2020. Also on the graph, you see the blue dots, the 2020 and 2030 blue dots. The 2020 blue dot is at 20% reduction relative to 90, 1990 levels. And that was set prior to, 10 years prior to 2020 to meet a 25% reduction by 2020. And the 50% reduction by 2030 is also shown as a blue dot on the graph. So we're required by law to meet 50% reduction economy-wide by 2030. In between those two numbers, you see a white dot, and that's our estimated target for our 2025 economy-wide emissions reduction. And that is set at 32% emissions reduction in 2025 relative to 1990 level. And I'm going to go over later on each sector, but just some observation from this chart. First of all, the power sector, which is the blue slate at the bottom. The power sector has decarbonized significantly in the last decade. So what that really means is that we need to lean on other sectors to carry the burden into 2030. And something of note for 2020 is that if you can focus your eye on the gray part of the graphic, 2020 shows the estimated effect of COVID on our Commonwealth and the significant reduction from emissions from our transportation systems. And policies to drive down emissions by 2025. I want to make sure that, you know, in this conversation, it's made clear really to achieve emissions reductions by 2025. Much of those efforts have to be underway, which is why the previous slides, I tried to explain some of the things that we have been doing even before 2020, but also continue to do and continue to add on since 2020 to make sure that we continue to keep the pressure on emissions reduction. And then you'll see that there's, you know, we're, we're, we're aiming to set the economy-wide greenhouse gas emissions at 32% for 2025. What that also means is that we're going to still have a lot more work to do for the second half of this decade. Greater reductions are largely left for the second, second half of the decade. And therefore, all of the policies in this deck and what we'll talk about today are driving not only the emissions down through 2025, but all the way down to 2030. So I'm going to pause now in case there are any specific, just clarifying questions on this graphic, because I realize sometimes these numbers are not so easy to interpret. I'm not sure, Han, perhaps if there are just brief clarifying question, we, can we ask people to raise hand to do that?
Sure, yes, we could do that.
Okay.
And so next on the list, first on the list is Paul Poppins Talk. And did you have a clarifying question about this particular graph?
Yes, please. Could you please repeat the comment about the estimated reductions due to COVID?
Yes, um, so what you see in the 2020 emissions is, like every other year, is the emissions economy-wide for Massachusetts through our inventory. The 2020 numbers are estimated, so they're not the final numbers, but we think they're good estimates. What I was trying to say is that recall how drastic COVID had affected our economy in 2020. And therefore, the emissions, particularly in our transportation sector, are affected by that COVID impact. So when you look at the gray, you'll see a bit of a dip in 2020. And that is estimated to be, well, all of it is reflecting the COVID effect.
Okay.
And the reason this is important to, thank you, thank you for your question. The, the reason we, not, not that we want to highlight the effect of COVID, but I think we all can recall how severe that impact was on the economy. And that to achieve that emission, that level of emissions reduction going forward is, 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 is actually a lot of hard work. Okay, I'm going to move forward. Sorry, is there any? I, I guess I don't see the raised hand, so perhaps you see the raised hands.
Yeah, I see three more, four more raised hands, and then a couple of questions in the Q and A. Shall we talk about some of the question, clarifying question about this graph in the Q and A? Hoping that perhaps that might be the same question that those who have their hands raised also have. Would you like to do that, Undersecretary?
Could you say that again?
Um, would you like to cover some of the clarifying questions about this graph in the Q and A box?
Okay, I would like them to be, I would like to only address the clarifying question right now. So let me see, um. I, I, sorry, I, there's, could, Han, could you help me which one is a clarifying question?
Yes, one clarifying question is how are we estimating reductions in oil and propane?
The, I should clarify that the, all the numbers beyond, say, 2021, we don't have actual historicals for 2021 yet. So one should think about this, like everything beyond 2021 forward are actually simulated. So we are simulating an economy that has to achieve 50% reduction by 2030. And then I will actually talk a little bit more about this later. And then we have to simulate what each sector is doing to achieve as aggressive as possible emissions through this timeframe, through this decade. So for oil, I think the question was about oil and propane. We are anticipating that a portion of the users of oil propane for heating will transition to electric heating systems or electric heat pumps. Okay, so those, I'm going to move forward because there might probably be more policy questions than clarifying questions. Next slide, please. Okay, this, while this sounds like, looks like a complicated table, what it is, is we want to clarify what is counted under which, which sector. On the left-hand side are required by the Climate Law, the different sectors that we are either obligated or can set supplements for. So power sector includes all of the electricity power, power-producing plants in Massachusetts and accounting for imports from rest of New England or outside of New England. Transportation is all the transportation system in the state, so that's actually relatively clear. Where it diverges from the way that the statute have listed is the statute had listed residential heating and cooling, and then separately, commercial and industrial heating and cooling. So what we have actually decided to do, based on even including stakeholder feedback, is that the residential heating sector is going to be counted as sort of residential building heat. And the commercial heating will be separated into commercial industrial building heat, not, not the cooling portion of it. Assuming all, most of the cooling will be using electricity, but because power sector covers all the emissions from the power plants, we're actually using that to delineate all the emissions for electricity consumption as well. So instead of measuring it at the consumption level, we're measuring the emissions at the produce, production level, so at the power plants. And then we have a separate row for industrial processes and then a separate row for natural gas distribution services, which are only counting the leaks in the pipeline of a natural gas. which are only counting the leaks in the pipeline of a natural gas, whereas the residential heating and commercial industrial heating will cover the use of natural gas as well as other fossil generation, uh fossil fuels for heating. And then there are other sex sub or are other sectors, the solid waste, wastewater, agriculture, we are not going to set separate limits for those subsectors. And then on the right-hand side, when we discuss in the slide deck and in the Clean Energy Climate Plan, we're going to group these things and talk about them in the categories of electric power, transportation, buildings, which include residential and commercial, heating, and then everything else will be non-energy and industrial. Next slide, please. This slide um contains lots of numbers and uh and it's intended to do so. This is our preliminary supplements by the sectors that I just explained in the previous slide. And the reason this slide has more numbers than you you think we need for twenty twenty-five and twenty thirty is we wanted to give you a baseline of what the nineteen ninety emissions are using the same accounting as we are going to use for twenty twenty-five and twenty thirty. We measure each of the uh sectors emissions in twenty, in in nineteen ninety, which sets the baseline against which we have to measure the reductions uh reductions for twenty twenty-five and twenty thirty. And then we show you the actual or estimated actual from twenty twenty. Those are the first two columns of numbers by sector. And then in the middle, we have two columns on twenty twenty-five greenhouse gas emissions proposed sub- supplements. And then the last column, uh pair of column is the twenty thirty greenhouse gas emissions supplement. Um I will state, well, I will start backwards. The fifty percent you see at the lower right-hand side corner of that table, that is the fifty percent reduction economy-wide for twenty thirty. And we broke that up by sectors and you will see the million metric ton by sector. Um and then the and the percent reduction relative to nineteen ninety levels. Same thing for twenty twenty-five, you'll see that thirty-two percent uh reduction economy-wide with each sector's emissions reduction um relative to nineteen ninety levels. The additional um slightly gray numbers in uh next to the twenty thirty table are the numbers that were presented in the interim twenty thirty Clean Energy Climate Plan for twenty thirty. We just left, uh we we created this column so that everybody can see what we previously had um modeled and set versus what we're setting now for twenty thirty. Okay, next slide, please. Okay, um before I get into sector by sector and the details associated with those numbers you saw in the previous slide, wanted to share with you how we're coming up with these emissions reduction targets for both twenty twenty-five and the sublimits for twenty thirty. Um again, we're required to reduce emissions by twenty uh by fifty percent by twenty thirty. And we essentially uh modeled the economy making sure that we can meet the following objectives to develop least cost approach, meet all the energy demands, including reliability reserves, and meet the twenty thirty emissions limit. We, this policy strategies are developed to ensure transition to clean energy economy, ensure environmental justice and equity, and consider significant stakeholder input that we have received thus far and will continue to receive through this forum and ensure practicality and feasibility. And the balance and really the balancing act that we're trying to achieve through these plans are shown on the right-hand side, right? We want to make sure that we can achieve the uh we can meet all of the energy demands in the growing economy while achieving greenhouse gas emissions reduction. We want to make sure that we put a check on consumer costs, but also make sure that consumers receive the maximum amount of benefits from the clean transition. We want to make sure we balance e- environmental justice and equity such that the jobs and the economic value and benefits go to those that are most vulnerable. We listen to the stakeholders, both from a public stakeholder meetings like this, but also um our other stakeholder groups that have continually helped us improve the way we think about policies and really our analyses. We want to move the market, we want to help the market trans- transform and transition. So where the government can provide incentives and move the market, we're going to try to do that. And then importantly, also feasibility. We need to balance all of these factors in developing the policies that we have going forward. Okay, next slide, please. So to paint a picture of what this actually means. Okay, so you know, we'll get to the detail of the policy for each sector. But just to paint a picture, what does twenty thirty look like, which by the way is not very far away. What does twenty thirty need to look like for us to even achieve what we're set out to achieve? So in the transportation sector, we need EVs, electric vehicles or zero emission vehicles to represent or the sales of zero emission vehicles to represent most of our passenger vehicle sales and a growing share of our medium and heavy-duty vehicles by twenty thirty. And Massachusetts residents will drive a little less. Hopefully, because of the combination of better bike and pedestrian infrastructure, more housing near transit and fewer single occupancy commutes. For the residential commercial buildings, we want to achieve a third of homes have tighter building envelopes and are heated and cooled by electric heat pumps. We want commercial and industrial buildings to transition to electric or other low-carbon heating systems. We want all building owners and occupants have access to guidance and technical assistance to help with this transition and to provide sufficient amount of gap funding for clean heat solutions. For the power sector, more than two-thirds of the electricity consumed by Massachusetts would come from renewable or clean energy resources. And solar and offshore wind becomes a regional, regional uh resource and Massachusetts as the regional economic powerhouse to provide these resources for our residents. Operating with considerable guidance to ensure grid reliability and of and avoid ecosystem and land impacts. This means that we have a lot of work to do to to grow our electricity system and to make sure that they remain reliable as this transition occurs. And for non-energy and uh in other industrial, more cooling system use refrigerants that do not damage the ozone layer and are less potent greenhouse gases. And much less plastics, mattresses, and organic waste in our trash and really recycling so that we have less trash overall. So to to paint a picture what we need to get to by twenty thirty, these are some of the key things that we need to achieve by twenty thirty. Next slide, please. So for the next five slides, uh I know there are a lot of words on these slides, but we do want to give you a clear sense of what has already been emote- put into motion, what's relatively new in these um in these plans? And what are we trying to achieve as far as emissions re- reduction per sector and the key targets and metrics? I don't propose that I will read everything, but I will um highlight a few things. In transportation, the primary driver for deep decarbonization is electrification of our vehicles eh or getting them to zero emission vehicles. And the primary policy will encourage electrification, our vehicle fleet in both twenty twenty-five and twenty thirty plans. And this includes implementation of vehicle emission standard set by the California Air Resources Board. As I explained before, Massachusetts by statute must follow when California sets a tighter emission stand- standard for transportation. Currently, California Air Resources Board has um has already finalized their advanced clean truck standard and so has Massachusetts start to adopt the clean, the advanced clean cars and clean truck standard. So our Department uh Environmental Protection has already issued the clean truck standard and as California move forward with their clean car standard, uh Massachusetts will follow. The clean truck standard requires increasing zero emission vehicle sales in different commercial vehicle classes, including up to seventy-five percent zero emission vehicle sales of medium-duty commercial trucks by twenty thirty-five. They're currently working on clean car standard or clean cars program, but essentially that will be setting the pathway to a hundred percent that all new passenger vehicles to be zero emissions by twenty thirty-five. We have moved forward on two key programs to encourage electrification of medium-heavy-duty vehicles, namely the uh D O E R's More EV Truck program that provides incentives to medium-heavy-duty vehicles and Mass C E C's Fleet Advisory Services Program offers commercial fleet operators the opportunity to do a thorough infrastructure, logistics, cost and technology assessment to help fleets make the transition to zero emission vehicles. We're proposing additional policies to speed up the electrification of transportation with a focus on electrifying vehicles with important equity and public health benefits. That includes focused effort to electrify school buses, vehicles for hire and delivery trucks. We launched our school bus program earlier this year with a focus on putting Massachusetts school districts in a strong position to compete for federal funding and electrify vehicles that directly contribute to air pollution impacting our children and they provide a substantial amount of multiplicative effect on our communities as children or the next generation understand the impact of zero emission vehicles. We see vehicle for hire as an important opportunity to get electric vehicles into the hands of high-mileage drivers with high public visibility. That will also help educate the public about the comfort and the value of electric vehicles. While the rise of e-commerce makes delivery trucks represent a growing source of emissions for particularly near our ports and more broadly in our residential communities throughout the state, we want to provide incentives for delivery vans and trucks with high mileage to transition to zero emission vehicles. Funding for these programs are included in our mass track, the net, the nine-point-seven billion infrastructure bond bill that Governor Baker just filed a month ago. We also aim to secure additional funds through the Mass C E C Clean Energy Fund. We are moving forward with reforms to the More EV program that make the program more equitable and cost-effective by co- focusing incentives for low, moderate income residents and target high mileage or rural drivers. These programs will require additional funding, so we are working with our legislative partners on finding sources for these fundings for the future. We're placing more emphasis on strategies to reduce total vehicle miles traveled. We have heard comments about this in our previous uh interim plan. This is both something that our stakeholders and broader public care a lot about and an opportunity to highlight some of the step, steps that the administration is already taking to provide more people with alternatives to personal vehicles to get around. That includes increased ongoing commitment to complete streets and shared streets program. We have helped, you know, these programs have met, helped Massachusetts to become a national leader on multimodal transportation infrastructure. Support the M B T A's bus modernization program and our housing choice and the M B T A Communities Program, which will he- which should help us build more housing near public transportation. In addition, as mentioned earlier, in the wake of covid, we see greater potential to work with employers to reduce unnecessary travel. We will also pursue a statewide e-bike incentive. Our overall metrics for the sector include analysis for potential for EVs in Massachusetts based primarily on vehicle emission standards as well as projections of for the total number of charging stations to support that fleet. We also project a modest potential reduction in total vehicle miles traveled from all of the supportive policies that I mentioned earlier. You can see again, we are aiming to achieve significant reductions both for twenty twenty-five and twenty thirty. And in the key metrics, we aim to get two-hundred-thousand passenger EVs on the road by twenty twenty-five and nine-hundred-thousand by twenty thirty. In addition, another fifteen thousand for uh I'm sorry, fifty thousand for medium-to-heavy-duty vehicle on the road by twenty thirty as more models uh are made available. We're also aiming to achieve more public uh level-two and direct current or DC fast-charging EV chargers to be installed. So this summary slide outlines the uh strategies and the policies that we have for our transportation sector. Next slide, please. While n- none of the sectors are easy to decarbonize, um the our building sector is going to be challenging. Uh we have already taken on and have already moved forward with some very aggressive efforts, but lots remain to be done. The Commission on Clean Heat is currently deliberating on its recommendations. We have included in here on the slide some, but not all of the recommendations that are likely to come out of the Commission on Clean Heat. The actual recommendations really um come from many months of hard work from dedicated commission members uh that come from different parts of the sector that are going to be either, either the entities that will be affected by the reduction of emissions or those that have to do the reduction of emissions for our buildings. So I want to highlight a few of their uh recommendations or likely recommendations. These are not the final ones, but these are the likely ones that we we see coming out of the Commission on Clean Heat's work. First, um as the executive order placed a Commission on Clean Heat together, um one of the first things that they will be working on is declining cap on emissions from building heat. And with the emissions set for buildings for twenty twenty-five and twenty thirty, we will effectively have to have a declining cap for building heat. We propose, and this also is part of the work on commission, for the Commission on Clean Heat, to request that D E P or Department of Environmental Protection to develop the design for meeting those caps via regulation, including the consideration of a clean heat standard for the state. Were projects that transition from an emitting heating source Were projects that transition from an emitting heating so resource to a non emitting heat. Heating resource, including weatherization and transition to keep heat pumps. We're beginning this work by analyzing the potential. For a clean heat standard to help achieve the emissions reduction that we need and the potential implications for the costs. And how to spread those costs. I also want to highlight that we're creating a mechanism for building owners to report clean heat metrics. Such as energy use intensity and greenhouse gas emissions. This really is a first step toward having a way to standardize. The way to report greenhouse gas emissions from all different types of buildings across the Commonwealth. We're proposing to have a clear methodology for reporting that can consistently set emissions. Standards in the future. We want to make sure that we first also. Um achieve equity goals while measuring emissions from buildings and provide a stand a a a uniform methodology for reporting. To help disclose the energy costs and emissions associated with buildings. So that when municipalities choose to do so can can uh um can use. A building scorecard that's consistent with the uniform reporting state approach to report. The energy use and the emissions from buildings at point of sale and lease. We want to align key programs across the state with clean heat goals. This range this ranges from small scales such as adding clean heat guidance to programs like leading by example. To sweeping suggestions that change how utilities plan their infrastructure investments and legislation to shift. Mass saves purpose from energy savings to greenhouse gas emission savings. We want to remove key non-cost barriers, particularly improving training, education and outreach. And I will say that the Commission on Clean Heat. With many experts on around these topics have spent a significant amount of time developing ideas. About how to improve training for workforce that will help us conduct a transition. Education for the next generation of people, but also education for the public. About what res what resource types, what technologies are available and the cost of those technologies. So I just at this moment want to pause and make sure that. Uh there aren't some clarifying question, I also want to acknowledge. All of the work that the Commission on Clean Heat and the members of those that commission and the task force. Have been working really hard in the last uh three, four months to put on many of these. Um proposals together and again, we're only highlighting a few of them, some of them have not been completed, but um. Um I want to just pause here in case there are any questions. I'm also willing to spend a little more time to talk about the Commission on Clean Heat. Because we want to also share with the public about the work that the Commission on Clean Heat is working on. Um but before I open it up for clarifying question, I want to highlight a few things. As in the interim C C P, we will be tracking. Uh key metrics such as electric heating. Both whole home heating and hybrid heating. Or any kind of equivalent effort in the commercial sectors. And um these will serve as the metrics for us to achieve the reduction of clean uh greenhouse gas emissions from our building sector. So let me pause. For. Uh just maybe one or two minutes for any clarifying questions before I dive into all the other sectors.
Under Secretary, it looks like we have two hands raised, but I think they were raised from earlier.
Okay. All right, in that case, let me keep going, we always have more opportunities to come back. The electric sector. Most of the power sector work uh requires significant amount of time for planning and developing. Any large amounts of eh any large projects. Uh or any significant projects really requires substantial amount of work ahead of time. So therefore, what you see for the power sector. Is not really any particular change in our policy that have really started uh many years ago and are. Uh all uh under underway and um placed in motion, so I want to just highlight a few things. In the interim C E C P on the left hand side, we have already. Set these uh targets on, you know, I'm not I'm not going to read all of them. But one of the things that's already underway is that we are um of course completing all of the. Uh procurement that has already been set. Uh in the previous climates uh initiatives and then we have. Also started to set into motion of raising the clean energy standard for the state. Uh we want, we are working with their municipal electric suppliers to ensure that. They are also on target in decarbonizing and meeting the green greenhouse gas emissions set for. Uh municipal light plants. Uh we're initiating studies on solar sighting and interconnection. To address many of the concerns that we've heard about where you know the pace of. Solar as well as the impact of the solar are on land sector. And um our our multiple agencies are working on. Uh advancing the investment in our offshore wind industry, including. Dedicated investments in our port and infrastructure as well as inviting. And be welcoming to um manufacturing. Uh companies to come and locate in Massachusetts to support a growing offshore wind industry. On the what's new, really, um these are not new initiatives, they're just. New in the sense that we're carrying it forward. Uh what's required under the twenty twenty one climate law, we have additional offshore wind capacity procurement authorized. It has raised our R P S renewable portfolio standard to forty percent. And um I already talked about the G H G emissions for municipalities. Uh municipal light plant that is, and then funding allocated to mass C E C for workforce development. Like the building sector, we recognize there's substantial amount of investments needed for our workforce if we are going to. Continue to develop our solar and offshore wind industries. And then uh we are um changing or advancing our. Uh processes to ensure the equity, environmental justice, representation are included in the citing board decisions. So that is what we have for the power sector. We have close tracking for, of course, all the renewable procurement that's being done. One other thing that's um that's not listed here, that's also continuing is. We're working very closely, actually, it is shown on the left hand side, we're continuing our work with our regional planning partners. Um with other New England states as well as I S O New England. Um both changing the way um the transmission needs to be. Planned and how to reform our wholesale electricity market to accommodate. All of the clean energy resources across the New England states. Let's move forward to the non-energy industrial sector, next slide, please. As mentioned earlier, um most of um most of the non-energy industrial sector is to. Facilitate and implement the new regulations to reduce. And con consumption and production of hydro. Fluorocarbons and implements what has already been previously developed, the twenty third. Thirty solid waste master plan that was uh updated in October twenty twenty one. One thing that we will include in the C C P is to change the approach. For our gas system enhancement plan to upgrade, uh that is the plan that our uh our gas utilities. Are required to upgrade leaky pipes. And we want to make sure that we facilitate a change. That alternatives to replacing replacements of pipes are considered. Um particularly in areas where low gas utilization will transpire due to electrification. And such that our gas utilities are will put into place plans to not only uh. Upgrade and enhance and replace leaky pipes, but also consider alternatives. In uh to replace those pipes or to decommission those pipes. In the sector, you can see the metrics below, we will continue to track waste disposal. Um so that we continue to reduce the amount of waste being disposed. We will track the H F C emissions as a part of a standard tracking. And maintain the use of uh and the capacity of anaerobic digesters. Next slide, please. For natural working land, the most important strategy. Is to permanently protect our lands and trees from conversions. The other strategies include managing our natural working lands for carbon sequestration and improved resilience. Rest restoring our natural working lands for. Decreased emissions and enhanced carbon sequestration. These are strategies though um that are relatively new and they were not referenced in the interim C E C P. We want to incentivize durable wood products to extend carbon storage. And explore additional carbon sequestration resources that are beyond our state borders to help the Commonwealth. Achieve net zero emissions in twenty fifty. As many stakeholders have said, this is our resource. To use to sequester any remainder a remaining carbon emissions from our economy. So this is extremely valuable resource for the state. In the interim C E C P, we had referenced implement the implementing implementing the resilient lands initiative. And the Healthy Soils Action Plan to provide incentive programs to achieve. No net loss of forests and farms and implement best soil management practices. At that time, we didn't specify what incentive programs will be, what what the incentives programs will be. Because both of those efforts were still underway. Uh at that time, we also didn't specify how we would incentivize the use of durable durable wood products. I think we're going to put more specificity in these plans. Under the umbrella of what are also being discussed. In the resilient lands initiative, we're proposing a significant increase in funding for state land acquisition. Land conservation grants, farmland protection, particularly for farms that do not qualify for agricultural preservation program. Due to federal criteria as well as increased funding for healthy soil practices as part of the existing Massachusetts coordinated. Soil health program. We're proposing increased urban tree planting. Uh sorry, I got distracted by some of the chats. Uh we're proposing increasing urban tree planting as part of the greening of Gateway City Program. And we are launching a new program that aims to plant trees along bodies of water. To increase carbon sequestration while protecting water quality and increase wildlife habitat. In and along rivers, streams, lakes and ponds. We're proposing to launch a forest resilience program as a pilot program for the next five years to encourage climate smart forest management. And keep our forest live alive for longer. We propose to launch a forest viability program which aims to support forestry businesses in Massachusetts and scale up the production of. And market for durable wood products. Over eighty five percent. Of the wood products we use here in Massachusetts come from out of state where forests may not be sustainably managed as they are here. So by scaling up durable durable wood products marketed here in Massachusetts. We think we can enhance carpet sequestration in our forest while supporting communities and economies in more rural areas of the Commonwealth. To prepare for the forest viability program, we will commission a study of common end uses of Massachusetts timber. The barriers and opportunities to scale up the durable wood products market in Massachusetts. Including workforce needs associated with those markets. To supplement current and new tree planting programs, we're proposing a portion. Of the municipal vulnerability preparedness grant money be designated for greening projects. That provide both cooling respite for urban communities and additional carbon sequestration. To complement actions proposed in the resilient lands initiative and to limit the amount of. Forest land and wetland loss to development, we're proposing forest conversions. Be a new mandatory threshold for M I B U F um environmental impact review. The mass dip uh. A D E P update, we also propose that mass D E P update is wetland regula regulations. To require a no net loss of stored carbon in the wetland replication standard and to streamline the permitting process. For wetlands in the outer fifty feet of the wetland buffer zone. As an incentive for development to be cited further away from wetlands. And also mass D E P to streamline the permitting process for wetland restoration projects. To further encourage extended carbon storage from our trees and a reduction in embodied carbon in building construction. We propose that state funded construction projects be evaluated on the cost of carbon emissions. This action goes further than the recent executive order, which requires development of guidance on how state agencies can incorporate. Embodied carbon and internal cost of carbon in this emissions calculations and programs. So what are we trying to achieve here from all of these and new efforts, we hope to permanently. Permanently pro uh protect twenty eight percent of our natural working lands from conversion by twenty twenty five. And thirty percent by twenty thirty. Plant at least five thousand more acres of trees by twenty twenty five and more than sixteen thousand more acres of trees by twenty thirty. Twenty percent of privately owned forests and farms to be managed for carbon sequestration and resilience. No net loss for carbon in wetlands by twenty thirty. And twenty percent of timber harvested in Massachusetts to be used in durable wood products. In addition to these policy goals, we're currently discussing setting a net emissions goal for the natural working lands. We just conducted a technical workshop on March twenty eighth. A couple of weeks ago, we're technical and subject area subject matter experts. As well as members of our implementation advisory committee, nature nature based solutions working group. Discuss the merits, concerns and options. For setting net emissions goals on natural working lands. We're aiming to at least maintain the current carbon sequestration capacity of our lands into twenty twenty five and twenty thirty. This goal will comply with the statutory requirement by the twenty twenty one climate law and is not considered a sector emission supplement. So that completes my sort of sector by sector description of the policies uh for each of the sectors. And next slide, please, I want to just share with you some of our next steps. Our next step is to finalize the clean energy climate plan for twenty twenty five and twenty thirty and please treat. This presentation and hearing as our essentially our uh draft. C E C P for twenty twenty five and twenty thirty. Um and of course, be very happy to hear your comments as soon as I close up on the next steps here. Um we are going to receive, review and synthesize additional comments for these proposed limits and subliments and goals and policies. And therefore, we are continued to receive, these written comments are, you know, we're we're actually receiving incoming comments all through this past year. But we will continue to receive comments um through the end of this month. Um the only reason we. Need to sort of close up the comment period is we want to make sure we synthesize. Uh the comments and review them and make sure that we consider them in the final C E C P for twenty twenty five and twenty thirty. We will be updating the limits that you see here and the sublimits, these are treat them as draft. Limits because our analyses and the. Uh forecasts and the modeling have not been completely finished yet. We're still completing them and you know, making sure we cross the Ts and dot the Is and um refine them and make sure that. we have a great audit of all the results. Um but we are treating this set of material in this hearing as the draft limits and subliments. The final CECP for both two thousand and twenty-five and two thousand and thirty will be submitted to the legislature by July first. And that will be posted, will be uh they will be posted on our website. So this is what I have to, as far as prepared materials. And I think I'd like to open this up for comments. If anybody has uh particular comments, we are really treating this as a listening session. So if you have comments, this is a good time to bring them up. I just ask that any commenters that raise your hands. Um if you're joining by Zoom, you can unmute yourself when we invite you to to comment. And if you're joining by phone, to press star nine and then you have to press star six. I think press star nine to raise your hand and then press six to unmute yourself when we invite you to provide comments. Um we will try to answer the questions that you have raised in the Q and A. We may not get to all of the questions in the Q and A or your questions verbally. We don't treat the Q and A in this or the chat as the official um comments received. So if you have, if 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 either we don't address them or if you have additional comments, please do submit them in writing to the website um that you see on the on your screen here. Uh am I forgetting anything, Han or Nicole?
Nope, I think you got it all under secretary. I'm gonna turn it over to Nicole for our comments.
Great, thank you.
All right, thank you, under secretary. And it looks like we have a number of people with their hands raised, so I'm just gonna go down the line. And I have unmuted Steven and I invite you to speak. Can unmute yourself?
Uh yes, uh good afternoon. Uh my name is Stephen Trent. I work in the Connecticut River Valley with an organization uh called CISA, Community Involved in Sustaining Agriculture, and I'm the climate program coordinator there. And I was wondering if you could speak a little bit to the decarbonization of the um food supply system uh that, you know, we get about ninety percent of our food is imported. Uh and so like with the forest products that you mentioned, I was wondering if you could speak a little bit about some points in the plan that might address supporting um more local or regional food production and what that means for decarbonizing the food system that we all depend on. Thank you.
Thank you for your question. Um I just wanna s- say that a local food production is extremely important, not just for carbonization efforts, but just in general. And I know that our agricultural um colleagues um have often worked with our energy side of the house to make sure that um we account for the um the importance of maintaining our agricultural capabilities. Um on top of that, I perhaps I can hand that to you, Han, if you have anything to add to how we're thinking about um the questions being asked.
Sure, under secretary, just wanted um not thoughts, but just wanted to point out that that was it lands initiative that will be released um soon does talk about resilient uh resilient and local food production. So more to come in that effort. And I believe our colleagues at Massachusetts Department of Agricultural Resources are in um development of a farm action plan. Um I believe slated to come out later part of this year, and I believe it would cover uh local food production as well.
Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. And I'm gonna move to Tina and I'll invite you to unmute yourself and you can provide comment.
Hi, thank you so much. Thank you, uh under secretary Chang and all of you who have worked so hard on this plan. Uh I used to work for the state and I know how difficult it is to coordinate among agencies to get approval. And Obama used to say the ship of state turns very slowly. So I uh give you a lot of credit for all the work that you have done. I also know that a plan is only as good as you're able to implement it and move it forward. And I've asked you this before, Judy. How is the state gonna educate the, how are you all gonna educate the state's residents about the need for this plan, about the plan and how they can help uh to start implementing it? I've talked, asked you before about some kind of media campaign uh that I think would be really useful for residents. Um as I look at the local level as well as your state plan. Thank you.
Yes, thank you for your question, Tina. Uh I just um while we're really here to have a listening session, I I can't help to to respond to your comment because we did take your previous comments very seriously. And uh I think our whole team agrees with you, the need to um really reach out to the citizens of Massachusetts to help folks understand the importance of the, not only the work we're doing, but to really the transition that we must take on. The Commission on Clean Heat, while they were uh focused on heating sector, this also, this topic has also come up as a significant portion of the deliberation there. Uh because uh as you can imagine, heating our our buildings is a very diverse and diversified um effort. And the Commission on Clean Heat have recommended a a set, uh really provided a set of recommendations of how to increase communications can't communication, including campaign, as well as education for the public and working with our municipal partners to reach every resident and every citizen uh and every business in the Commonwealth about the importance of the transition and that transition occurs across the economy. So we take that to heart. We, in in response to that, our agency actually just set out two positions to make this a priority in the next several months, even starting in the next several months to start having a um climate communications plan to make sure that we engage with the public. And now the plan has to be a relatively long term, but we are kicking start, kickstarting this effort now because we know how important it is to actually e- explain, not educate, but to explain to people how important it is to conduct this transition. Because as many of you know, the decisions lie with individuals. When we ask people to buy EV and give them incentives, that's one thing to give incentives, another to make a choice to actually do the transition. Same thing about retrofitting existing buildings. We have um millions of existing buildings that will eighty percent of our twenty fifty twenty fifty bill, nah, twenty fifty buildings are already standing today. So retrofitting that large amount of buildings require investments, not just from governments, not just from ratepayers, but from prom- from private sectors and individual owners. And that's just stating a few things. I think Tina, your recommendation from previous sessions um are definitely taken to heart and many echo your sentiments. Thank you.
That's great to hear and I really uh congratulate congratulate you on dedicating to staff and gaining some kind of a communications department or communications channel. It's fantastic. So good luck with that and keep us, keep us informed and keep us um asking at the local level for how we can help with that. Thank you, Judy.
Thank you. And I'm gonna move um and invite Glenn um to speak. Glenn, you can unmute yourself.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to to provide comment and ask question. I'm concerned um in the presentation, you talked about the sort of impacts to forest lands as uh coming down to differing opinions on carbon storage. And yet we have almost a million acres of publicly owned lands in Massachusetts that are managed by either the Department of Conservation or Recreation or the Division of Fisheries and Wildlife, which um have the potential to uh double or probably quadruple the amount of carbon that they remove and store long term. And yet we have policies in place right now that are ensuring the continual degradation of about two percent of our publicly owned forests every year going forward, which means that those lands will be a carbon source, those degraded lands, subject to commercial logging, will be a carbon source, a source of CO2 emissions for decades to come. And we know that logging releases about eighty percent of the above ground stored carbon into the atmosphere. And that does not include the below ground stocks of carbon that also get disturbed from that kind of uh degradation. And so why can't the policy change to ensure that our forests going, meeting the twenty fifty goal, will have the ability to uh double the amount of carbon that they can remove and store instead of continuously degrading that capacity through commercial timber sales on publicly owned lands. That's a policy issue that should be very easy to address. It's the lowest hanging fruit that we have available to us when it comes to forestry because these lands are entirely owned and controlled by the Commonwealth. Thank you.
Thank you. And I am gonna move um and invite Matt O'Malley. You can now unmute yourself.
Hi there. Good afternoon. Great to uh see everybody. Sorry, I was just trying to get my thing uh signed up. Wait. Good afternoon. It's great to be with everyone. My name is Matt O'Malley. I am the Chief Sustainability Officer for Vicinity Energy. Prior to that, I served as a Boston City Councilor for the last eleven years, where I authored and passed a number of environmental initiatives, including Berto, which is our Building Emissions Reduction Ordinance. It's exciting to be on the other side of the virtual table this afternoon and wanted to thank under secretary Chang and her incredibly talented and committed team for this impressive and important work. I want to briefly share a little bit about what we're doing at Vicinity. Vicinity Energy and its assets play a major role in heating buildings across Boston and Cambridge, as well as seventeen other districts across the East Coast, Midwest, and South. This is a role Vicinity does not take lightly, which is why we are committing to carbon neutral operations by two thousand and fifty and cutting green greenhouse gas emissions in half by two thousand and thirty-five. Companywide, those metrics will be hit a lot sooner in Boston and Cambridge. Such commitments will absolutely take a big bite out of Boston Cambridge carbon emissions with the potential to avoid eight hundred thousand metric tons per year across approximately sixty-five million square feet of buildings served in those communities. District Energy is uniquely poised to be just one of our tools to building decarbonization. But just don't take my word for it. We've seen it used to great impact in Copenhagen, Malmo, Drammen, Glasgow, Vancouver, and other progressive environmental leading cities. At Vicinity, we're implementing an aggressive but achievable decarbonization effort, initially at our Kendall plant, that in the impact will be significant. With our approach of electric boilers, heat pumps, interconnection with the grid and thermal storage capabilities, Vicinity will lead the country in producing sustainable green steam. We will meet and surpass Berto benchmarks internally and help our clients do the same. We're installing fifty megawatts of electric boilers, ten megawatts of heat pumps, and a thousand megawatts of thermal storage to meet decarbonization targets in hospitals, life science, civic centers, and other commercial properties. As Vicinity transitions away from natural gas into our new biogenic fuels, electricity and heat pumps, the company's steam carbon footprint will drop dramatically. Vicinity will begin to use renewable power to generate e-steam, a zero-carbon renewable thermal energy product to meet the needs of Boston and Cambridge. Vicinity's Kendall Square Station is conveniently situated in a position to use the natural resources surrounding the facility such as Boston's own Charles River. Heat lifted from the Charles can be used to create steam from heat pumps installed across Boston and Cambridge. This is another clear example of Vicinity's vision and commitment to cleaner generation, reduced emissions in the near and long term. And I should just say, as a native Bostonian, it's quite remarkable to think that our beloved Charles, once the object of derision in the presidential campaign thirty-five years ago, will soon be used as a renewable energy resource. You've been very gentle. So I'll just briefly end with this. Work we're discussing here, particularly looking at buildings, is absolutely crucial if we want to meet our decarbonization goals. We need to use every tool in the toolbox to get there, but we cannot support new gas boilers or gas infrastructure. It will only deepen the already cavernous hole which we find ourselves. To act on climate, let's start with our buildings, which account for nearly two-thirds of greenhouse gas emissions in Boston and Cambridge. Our customers want action and our planet deserves nothing less. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Matt. And I will now move to Martin and invite you to speak.
Uh thank you very much. So my name is Martin Rutt. I'm a Boston resident. I was chair of the Neighborhood Association for the Backbame, still on its board, uh and also a member of a group, including a remarkable number of splendid women, uh gas leaks allies. And I was delighted to hear Matt O'Malley preceding me since obviously as a Boston resident, I was also very much involved in Berto and appreciated the leadership he showed in getting that done. Unfortunately, however, I have to point to a much more negative uh development or risk rather than the positive programs that he's referring to. And that is, as I think you're aware, a process that's going on now uh under the DPU, the Department of Public Utilities, Docket two thousand and eighty. And this process is entitled The Future of Gas. And it's run and managed by the gas utilities. And they've produced a whole lot of reports and findings and recommendations, supposedly objective and independent. Well, they're not. And I have to warn you that within a short period of time, and there are, is gonna be public testimony allowed, you are gonna hear a firestorm of objections to the deeply disturbing and really rather frightening recommendations that are coming out of this process. And I think that, you know, it's important to realize that in order for the splendid programs and goals that you've announced to be implemented, one needs to get buy-in from major players in the public sector. And that includes the gas utilities and the electric utilities, among others. And I'm particularly concerned about the building sector and the natural gas distribution and service. What the gas utilities are doing is essentially proposing to continue to have us as ratepayers spend large amounts of money and give them healthy returns on very expensive pipeline infrastructure into the indefinite future. And they are trying to fool us by assuring us that they can replace natural gas with other gases that will substantially reduce greenhouse gas emissions. And that is absolute rubbish. They are in fact even claiming that so-called renewable natural gas, which has the same chemical composition as natural gas, can in fact be zero carbon. And if that doesn't work, they propose to deliver to our homes hydrogen, which is an extremely flammable gas. It burns at a higher temperature than natural gas and therefore release more toxic nitrogen oxides into our homes than natural gas does at the moment. So I'm deeply concerned about the direction that this docket is taking. And I do hope that the executive agencies, as well as the legislator, will take steps to ensure that the DPU does not produce orders implementing the findings and recommendations of this docket that in my opinion will make it impossible for us ever to achieve the kinds of improvements in the atmosphere, reductions in emissions, improvements in public health, making uh the atmosphere that different people in different communities breathe more equitable in terms of, in terms of their status of health than is the case at the moment. So I I'm sorry to be so negative uh in in what is otherwise a very positive environment. But I think it's very important that we recognize that there are some formidable opponents to the kind of policies and goals and achievement of the goals that you're proposing, for which I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Martin. And I will move on to Brian Campbell and invite you to speak.
Um Brian Campbell, um I'm an eco-moutainist and pro-nuclear advocate. Um I um I'm most concerned right now with the with what came from China today is that um China on Thursday said they would reject any pressure or coercion over its relationship with Russia in response to the call from US Treasury Secretary Janet Yellen for Beijing to use a special relationship with Russia to persuade Moscow to end the war. to use a special relationship with Russia to persuade Moscow to end the war in Ukraine. That sounds to me like China is totally committed to its relationship with Russia and supporting the Russians in the Ukraine war. That to me says that we need to look at our energy policy. President Biden has said that he wants to power Europe with LNG from the United States. We could easily build a pipeline, not easily, it would take a few years, but we could build a pipeline to our Chelsea LNG import facility to export gas to the EU. But that doesn't seem in the cards. There's going to have to be more pain. And I just see us in a downward spiral where our energy systems are, we're unilaterally surrendering our energy systems, our gas, our fossil fuel, our nuclear power plants, and we're shutting them down. And in face of this, this new world order of Russia and China aligned against us, we should not be doing this at this time. And to me, like climate change, yes, it's real, it's a problem. But we have higher prioritized, higher priorities to me right now between 2025 and 2030. And it should be focused on the reality of the world today. And this, all this stuff that you're doing is wonderful. It's a good plan. If we were in peacetime, but that is not the case right now. And right now, my electrical bill is 26 cents a kilowatt hour. That's the third highest in the United States of all states, including California. But that may change. California is going to close Diablo Nuclear, and that's going to definitely put a wrench into their electrical reliability. And even our electrical reliability is threatened right now.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. If you can, we have many folks with their hands up.
Okay, this is what the ISO Chairman says, okay. All right, thank you.
Great, thank you. And I do want to remind everyone, we're asking for comments to stay around two minutes possible so we can get to everyone. And I will invite Sylvia to speak.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity to comment and thank you for the presentation. My name is Sylvia Parsons. I'm one of the co-chairs of the Transportation Working Group of 350 Massachusetts. One procedural point, we realize that you are under a statutory deadline and that you therefore have to limit public comment. However, given that there was some last minute cancellation and rearrangement of these hearings, if there were any way that you could extend the deadline for written comments just for a week or so, that would be helpful for several organizations which are trying to coordinate their response. The other thing I'd like to say more substantively is that I'm very glad to see that the MBTA's bus electrification and bus service improvements are a focus of your plans. But I am disturbed by the absence of commuter rail, regional rail from your public transit plans. Commuter rail has a wide reach within Massachusetts and even beyond. The diesel trains run through environmental justice neighborhoods, which means that they're having an impact on pollution and public health. And most importantly, for your concerns, if we're trying to encourage mode shift, if we're going to reduce vehicle miles traveled, it's great to be working on pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure. I'm glad that you're doing that. But we need to have the options for longer trips to be by public transit rather than in private vehicles. An electrified regional rail system with all-day service and EMUs would be able to provide not only cleaner service but better service. It would be able to serve trips beyond the nine-to-five commuting schedule, which has in any case been disrupted by the pandemic. And I'd encourage you to think about that as well as about the buses at the MBTA. I'm also glad to hear that the RTA bus electrification is on your minds. I'd also say that expanding RTA service for the same mode shift reasons would be a helpful addition to that. Thank you again for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you, Ms. Parsons.
And I will now invite Caitlin Peel Sloan to speak.
Thank you. Thank you, Undersecretary Chang and team. It was really helpful to have this presentation and there's a lot to like. I think you'll expect that there are a lot of pieces we will have comments and criticisms and constructive suggestions on that we'll provide in writing. One piece that I want to really hold out and echo from some others is the need to rack in with our methane emissions and what we're emitting now from the fossil gas system and then what we could potentially be emitting if we're blending biofuels. It's just not credible to assume zero emissions impact from biofuels. It's methane. It leaks as methane. It burns as methane into carbon dioxide. So it's really important that as part of the CECP, that EEA takes steps to update our methane emissions accounting framework to follow that. In general, I appreciate the focus on different modes for transportation, but also emphasize the need to electrify buses and trains to be able to serve the largest number of people with clean access to transportation. And the rest we will provide in writing. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now I will invite Joshua to speak.
Good afternoon. My name is Joshua Placensky. I'm a researcher at Harvard Forest. On your previous slide, the natural working land slide, your plan calls for 500 new acres of trees by 2025, 16, sorry, 5,000 new acres by 2025 and 16,000 acres by 2030. I would like you to clarify if you're proposing a net gain in forest cover in Massachusetts. That is, will tree cover gain be greater than tree cover loss such that the percentage of our state covered by forest would be increasing under your plan? It is, it's important to clarify if you're proposing a net gain because the baseline development scenario in the 2020 land sector were projected about 3,700 acres of forest loss per year. Additionally, it's important to clarify if you are proposing tree cover gain versus forest cover gain, because we know that about 18,000 acres of timber harvest are subjected, of timberland are subjected to harvest in Massachusetts every year. And this canopy cover loss, will that be factored into your equation for tree cover since the canopy takes many years to recover after harvest? Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I'll move to Laura to invite you to speak.
Well, let me just quickly say that the goals are actually for urban and riparian trees. So I think I understand your comments. And of course, the goal is to increase net gain, using your words. And but I also understand that the, you know, there are natural losses as well associated with that. So our goals, our metrics are measuring the activities that we can control and gain. But I think I take your point that we probably should also make sure that we track the net effect. So let's move on.
Hi, good afternoon. Thank you for holding this hearing. My name is Laura Height. I'm the US Policy Director for Partnership for Policy Integrity based in Pelham, Mass. I have comments on three sections, electric power, buildings, and natural working lands. On the electric power, I want to note that the PowerPoint presentation has no mention of Department of Energy Resources' proposal to amend the RPS rules to allow more biomass power plants to qualify as renewable energy in Massachusetts. DOE R Commissioner Patrick Woodcock has testified before the legislature that these regulations will yield increased biomass production regionally, and that's going to drive up emissions, which is completely inconsistent with the state's climate emissions reductions requirements. We do support reducing the emissions by 70% from the power sector. We're very concerned because it appears there might be a carryover of modeling error in the 2050 decarbonization roadmap, which determined that, their words, not mine, burning wood waste is carbon neutral. That science does not support that position. Secondly, on the wood heating, the Clean Heating Program, I see a lot of really good things here. Again, we support declining emissions cap. But I want to flag that wood heating is a major source of pollution in Massachusetts. It's disproportionate, really. Wood burning boilers and furnaces emit, although it's really a very small part, maybe 2% of homes in the state heat with wood. PPI's analysis of EPA submissions data found that residential and commercial wood heating accounted for 83% of all PM 2.5 emissions from the heating sector and a whopping 22% of the state's total PM 2.5 emissions. So when you're doing metrics for the heating sector, we do encourage that you include particulate matter. And this is really something where we strongly believe Massachusetts should eliminate subsidies for wood heating. And including, you know, claiming that buying these newer EPA certified stoves will reduce air pollution problems, I want to direct you and we'll send it with our comments to a recent study by NESCAM, the Northeast States for Coordinated Air Use Management, which has a representative from Massachusetts DEP on it that found that EPA's certification program to ensure new wood heaters meet clean air requirements is dysfunctional. That's a direct quote. And that, again, direct quote, "Without reliable certification procedures, replacing old stoves with newer models may not result in pollution reduction benefits." The NESCAM report also found significant shortcomings concerning efficiency claims by manufacturers. So again, I'm glad that I don't see that highlighted here, but that doesn't mean it's not part of your plans. And I strongly encourage, as you develop those recommendations, to remove all incentives for wood heating in Massachusetts. Lastly, I don't have much time to go into this, but we do have concerns about the national, natural and working lands in particular, because Massachusetts is at the forefront. We want to make sure you do it right. I'd like to be more involved in engaging with you of that. But you know, certain buzzwords don't necessarily protect our forests from buzzsaws. So protecting forests from conversion does not protect them from logging and clear cutting. No net loss doesn't mean we're not going to lose forest. And in other, you know, other assumptions here, such as durable wood products being part of carbon sequestration are not supported. Most of the carbon gets lost in the process of developing durable wood products. And whereas if you have a living tree continuing to grow, it's going to continue to store and sequester more carbon. So there's a lot more we could say here. We will submit some written comments. And I do thank you for this opportunity to speak with you today.
Great, thank you. And I will invite Gia to speak. Can unmute yourself.
Hi there. Thank you for hearing my comments. I am so glad to follow Laura Height because I would like to ditto everything that she just said and elaborating a little bit more on the lands use and forest-related comments. I'm afraid that you've been misled, most likely by the forest products industries, to believe that there is such a thing as management for enhanced resiliency. And it's very convenient for them to tell you that and then encourage local production of forest products such as CLT. That is not a climate solution. There is science to, current peer-reviewed science refutes that resiliency can be improved by any type of human intervention. And I will send some sources with some written comments on that. So I encourage the EEA to check for evidence of this whole premise. It's, you know, there are some big policies being predicated on this false premise, including the Resilient Lands Initiative. So please check that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. The concept of sustainable forestry was developed between the turn of the 20th century and World War II. It does not translate into the era of the climate emergency. Whereas the primary intent of sustainable forestry when it was conceived of was to ensure, you know, a constant reliable supply of timber. Right now, carbon is our primary concern. And so, oh gosh, there's so much to say. But so I urge the EEA to think about that. Anytime that you are tempted to use the phrase "sustainable forestry", and where I'm hearing it is particularly in the idea that it's good for, good climate policy to encourage local forest products, durable wood products. We cannot have our cake and eat it too. And I'm afraid that you are receiving your information from the bakers, the makers of the cake, and they're, they have not substantiated the concepts that you're working with. Lastly, I want to sort of...
Do you think you can keep your comments to two minutes? Thank you.
Just 10 more seconds, which is to say that forest conversion is not the only threat to global warming. Forest density counts. If you take a ton of carbon out of a forest and it stays a forest, you've still lost a ton of carbon. And Harvard Forests, Jonathan Thompson and David, I think it is Foster, have materials. Actually, your land sector report says that from 2020 to 2050, we could increase our carbon stocks in forests by 50%. So that relates to Glenn Ayers' comment, and I urge you to think about that carefully. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I'll move on to Miriam and Mike Curland and invite you to speak.
Thanks. Hi. I would like to also echo Laura Height's message comment and Gia's comment and Glenn Ayers' and possibly also Martin's comment. Those are all very concerning. I'm very concerned about our forests, our state forests, being commercially logged on public lands despite public outcry against it. And that's a really important issue, as is the issue of biofuels. In order to get the biofuels, you have to cut down trees. And that is not something that we should be doing in this day and age. And the other problem is the solar, cutting down forests for solar. We need to put all of our solar onto already degraded land and on rooftops. And if we, if we do all that, then we don't need to cut down any forest or farmland for solar. And I think we, it should be considered developing an infrastructure for hemp to replace both plastics and wood products because hemp grows quickly. It can be used for building. It could be used for clothing. It could be used for... It can be used for building. It could be used for clothing. It could be used for bags. It could be used for anything that we're making using toxic materials. And I am also very against nuclear power. Um, and also against hydro power when it, it's not being developed properly. Um, if it's, if, if fish are dying because of hydro power, that's not a good thing. If rivers are dying because of, of, um. Hydro power, that's not a good thing. There, there are probably ways to do small hydro to make electricity. Without, um, without ruining our rivers. Um, and the other thing.
Thank, thank you. I, I, I think we have many people on the queue to speak. If you can. Complete your comments, that'd be great. Thank you.
Yeah, the only other point would be that, um. That, um, I can't think of it right now. Okay, sorry. But, um, yeah, I'm done.
Thank you. And I'll move to invite Doug Pope to speak. You can unmute yourself.
Yes, this is a question for the Undersecretary. Uh, could you please explain the numbers? Uh, behind the thirty percent of natural working lands. You know, the, the core habitat, natural landscape are represent about two point, you know, a little over two million acres. Um, what do you, what do you envision with the natural working lands?
You want, should we go back to the previous slide?
The, uh, the slide, yeah, I'm on the slide now. I was looking to understand the numbers behind the thirty percent. Or if, if I need to follow up with Hung, I can do that.
Yes, that, that might be more efficient way of doing this, just because I see seven or eight people in the queue.
Not a problem. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Doug.
All right, thank you. And, um, I will invite Fred. You can now unmute yourself.
Thank you. My name is Fred Bunger. I'm a member of the Town of Wellesley Climate Action Committee. Wellesley has achieved about a twenty-five percent reduction in greenhouse gas emissions from two thousand and seven through twenty-one. We've adopted greenhouse gas reduction goals of net zero emissions by twenty fifty, like this date. And as a climate action plan roadmap to meet those goals. Buildings are sixty-one percent of Wellesley's total emissions. Our current residential average energy use intensity is sixty-five thousand BTUs per square foot per year. And the commercial industrial institutional average is about a hundred and four. CAP establishes a targets of thirty EUI average for residential. And forty EUI average for commercial and institutional. These building energy efficiency targets coupled with electrification and supply of a hundred percent renewable energy. Will help us meet the net zero emissions goal. But we cannot meet our goals through local actions alone. We need state support for first, a true net zero emissions stretch energy code. That does not permit fossil fuel use. Second, requiring energy. Annual energy use disclosures on property transfers, which could be done now. Third, establish the state building energy disclosure and improvement program, as you mentioned. Requiring both EUI energy use intensity and carbon intensity by building type. Fourth, improve incentives for both building envelope improvements and electrification through mass save. And provide much more support for municipal light plant communities like Wellesley. Fifth, and this may be a small item, Wellesley has two hundred and thirty-four units of state-owned subsidized housing. That are sorely in need of deep energy retrofits and electrification. Sufficient state funding needs to be available to pay for these building envelope improvements. And conversion of fossil fuel equipment to electrical. This would also address a key environmental issue. Thank you for your consideration and for allowing me to speak at this public forum.
Thank you.
Okay, um, Fred, and we'll move to Ken. I will invite you to unmute yourself. Ken Bacon, are you able to unmute yourself?
Sorry, I, if I hit the button, I didn't mean to, but that's a mistake on my part. I've been listening intently. Thank you very much.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, I will move to Sally Pick and invite you to unmute yourself.
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, hi, uh, Undersecretary Ching. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to, um, to comment and thank you for. Uh, all of your team's hard work on this, on this new, uh, update on the CECP. Uh, I have a couple of disparate, uh, comments and, and, and questions, uh, that I just wanted to bring up. Uh, I wanted to. Uh, and I, I brought this, brought this up in the chat, but I wanted to bring it up, uh, for others to, to hear that. Uh, in transportation, um, I wouldn't, I would urge you to include expanded broadband as, as a. As a way to reduce vehicle miles traveled. Um, there are a lot of people in, uh, I'm out in Western Massachusetts and. And people like in Springfield who don't have access to it, people in small rural towns who don't have access to it yet, believe it or not. We are in, still in dial-up land, some people. Uh, in terms of, uh, being out in a, uh, regi- rural area. Um, I want to emphasize that we really need access to electrification of the regional transit authority bus fleets. So I know that I'm, I'm, the, that there was an emphasis on the, uh, metropolitan bus system. But, uh, we're out here in the Western Massachusetts area and there are lots of people and we need to be supported. It's important to, A, uh, reduce vehicle miles traveled and B. Uh, give people, uh, who may not be able to afford a car or have access to a car. Um, more efficient and low emission, uh, ways to get around and get to their, their. Uh, employment and so forth. Uh, I want to second the, uh, request for commuter rail electrification. And expansion from, uh, from Western Massachusetts along the Route Two corridor. Expand that commuter rail to Boston from, uh, Western Mass. And, uh, I want to second the comment that was just made, um, about the need for a net zero energy stretch code. That does not allow fossil fuels use that, that seems, uh, very much counter to the intent and the goals of this plan. And lastly, that this is probably more relate, more, uh, directed toward clean heating folks. But, uh, I just wanted to bring up a concern, uh, that the transition, I'm, I'm really excited to see their transition to. Clean heat, uh, air source heat pumps, mini splits, um, to be very ambitious. However, uh, it's been noted that, um, I think last year there was an, there was, uh. Um, the goal was to do a hundred thousand last year, I believe, and several hundred were done. So we're nowhere near the level, the point is, we're nowhere near the level of adoption identified in the interim plan, uh, twenty thirty interim plan. And in this plan, this new draft plan. So I wonder how you're going to address that. I'm glad to hear that you have two people who you've, you've just recently hired to. To do marketing that may, may help that process. Uh, and one other, uh, point related to this. Is that I was recently on a DPU hearing. Um, wherever Source was requesting a thirteen point two percent increase in distribution charges. So I'm wondering, in light of that and what people were reporting as additional supply charges on their bills. How are you thinking about addressing the affordability of? Uh, heat pumps for low income populations. In terms of being able to afford the, the increased electric costs and how does that compare to what they've been paying for fossil fuels? For fossil fuel heating. So I think that's a really important piece to, of, of the equitable ability and environmental justice. Aspect of your, of your, your emphasis to, to really look at really hard.
Great.
I think that was it. So thank you so much for the opportunity. I'll be sending, sending, uh, comments on written.
Thank you, thank you. Um, I'm going to hand the baton to my colleague Han. And she will continue with Nicole and Dan to receive your comments. Um, but at this point, I need to jump off and, uh, I want to thank everybody for participating. But, um, those that can stay and would like to stay and provide comments, um, please continue. Thank you. To you, Han.
Thank you.
All right, um, we'll move to invite Lynn Man. Um, you can now unmute yourself.
Hi, thank you so much. Um, my name is Lynn Man. I live in Lunenburg, Mass. And I want to thank you guys for having this forum. I'm the team leader for the Massey, our Club Forest Protection Team. And a working member of Climate Action Now in Western Mass. And I wanted to comment on two things. One is on the process. For today's meeting and secondly, a couple of content questions or comments. So first, in terms of the process, I really do appreciate the comprehensive presentation and the opportunity to make a public comment today. However, the fact that an actual draft of the plan has not yet been released and the slides just came out two days ago. I feel like it limits people's ability to provide really thoughtful feedback right at this time. And I know somebody else had mentioned too, that they would like a little bit more time to organize within their organizations or coalitions. So I would like to request that the public comment period be extended possibly till May thirteenth. In order to allow people and organizations time to process all of the information that's been given and presented today. And to be able to provide thoughtful responses. With respect to the presentation itself, I'm just addressing slide seventeen. The natural and working lands. The first bullet under twenty thirty, um, says explore incentive programs. Designed to achieve no net loss of forests and farmlands. And somebody else mentioned this as well, but I'm going to reiterate it. Um, it's not just that we don't, we don't want to see no net loss. We want to increase. Undisturbed forests and preserve wetlands in order to address the dual and interrelated crises of climate change. And biodiversity loss and to be able to sequester more carbon. Um, so perhaps, I don't know if this is realistic or not, but perhaps this could be tied into the carbon offset market goal. Which is the last bullet in that column, um, in which it, there could be incentives for increasing. Um, undisturbed forests and, and, um, wetlands. Then in terms of the third bullet is a stu-, um, it says study solar sighting that minimizes environmental impact. Um, I believe this doesn't really go far enough. It's good. It's a good goal, but it doesn't go far enough. So I would suggest changing this to study solar sighting that avoids. And then minimizes and mitigates environmental impact. The intention in this, I believe, needs to focus first and foremost. On avoiding disturbing, um, intact forests. And then only if avoidance is not possible, for whatever reason. Should we be looking at minimizing the impact? And if we're impacting natural lands at all. And then if, if we are minimizing at the same time, we need to be mitigating. And that needs to be part of the total plan. So I would add the words avoiding as well as minimize and then mitigating to that. To that clause. And then finally, I would urge you to specifically in the plan disqualify biomass from the RPS. This has been brought up to this team and many, and other teams as well, many times in public comments. DOE continues to expand incentives for biomass and it needs, it needs to be stopped. And I would very much appreciate this being addressed in the CECP. So that's it for my comments. And I really thank you for the work that you're doing and for taking my comments. Thanks.
Great, thank you. And, um. I will now, um, invite Kai to speak.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Kai Salem. I am the Policy Coordinator at Green Energy Consumers Alliance. And I will give some brief comments across, uh, all three biggest drivers of the climate crisis for Massachusetts. And so to start off with, we did submit comments, uh, fairly comprehensive comments on the last draft of the CECP. And we have seen some changes, um, but not enough to make us comfortable that we can achieve these goals. Um, first, uh, on electric vehicles. And we believe that the policies listed might be enough to hit the twenty twenty-five goal of number of, of EVs. Though we need much more to reach twenty thirty. And there's an open question of how the state will pay for all of this without TCI, which was assumed in the last draft. We also recommend that we move the phase out of new gas vehicle registrations from twenty thirty-five to twenty thirty. Uh, because that will maximize our chances to meet that twenty thirty goal. If we want to hit our goals for twenty thirty, we simply cannot be registering new gas vehicles, uh, in twenty thirty. Similarly, on buildings, um, we have some concerns about the, uh, target of a third of residential buildings. Are powered with heat pumps by twenty thirty because that would require, um, most likely replacing, uh, quite a few. Heating systems before they are, uh, have hit failure. And, um, we think that we should look at other, uh, strategies, including having a really tight envelope, a lot of weatherization. Statewide building performance standards and, um, more on the HFEC to get there. We definitely need a lot more detail on the HFEC. Similarly, with, um, transportation, uh, phasing out gas and oil in new buildings. Can help us ensure that we meet our twenty thirty goal. Finally, on electricity, um, we can do more on electricity. Seventy percent of electricity is a, uh, from renewable sources is a good goal. But as we saw in that initial chart, we're already most of our way to that goal. There's a lot more that can be done, um, on electricity, especially given our offshore wind goals. And we believe that we can get up to eighty percent or even a hundred percent renewable electricity by twenty thirty. This will make up for some of the really, really strong challenges we expect to see in meeting our goals on transportation and buildings. Uh, and as we all know, municipal aggregations have been leading the state, uh, leading the Commonwealth. On reducing carbon from our electricity. Uh, and yet the DPU is holding up a lot of aggregations right now. So, um, we support amendments to the current set climate bill as well as any actions the administration can take. To, uh, let aggregations lead to create more of them and to move ahead. We will be submitting, um, much more in-depth written comments, uh, because we want to make sure that this draft CECP or the final CECP. Is as strong as possible.
Great, thank you very much. And, um, it looks like we have one final hand. I'm Gia. I will, um, invite you to speak.
Uh, I'm sorry, I didn't put my hand down, but I had my turn. I can talk some more if you want.
I apologize. I didn't realize that was an old hand. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
So thank you so much. Um, it's unfortunate, Undersecretary, I have to make it to her three o'clock meeting, but thank you so much for everyone who. Uh, was able, were able to hang on, um, and listen to the, uh, last comment. So thank you for that. And, um, in terms of, um, next steps. Undersecretary already covered it, but we will be receiving comments until the end of the month. Having said that, we did, you know, we hear requests to extend this. Uh, to, we will talk amongst ourselves and we'll, uh, we'll see what we can do. Thank you so much. And I will end the webinar now for everyone. Thank you now.